I'd like to call the regular session meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Romanek.
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Sui.
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Here.
May please stand and have invocation by Pastor Brian Robinson, followed by salute flag.
Would you pray with me? Dear God, we thank you for your faithfulness to us, and especially to this city that we all love. We ask for your wisdom tonight as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights, and we welcome your presence. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all the residents in Millville. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. You tell us that if anyone lacks wisdom, let him ask God who gives generously, and it will be given. And so we claim this promise as we start this meeting, and trust in your provision. Thanks for being with us always. It's in the name of your love we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the Oakland Public Meetings Act of 1975, was advertised, posted, and made available to the public as required by statute. The municipal clerk is directed to include a statement in the minutes of this meeting. We have now reached public comment on agenda items only. If anybody from the public would like to comment on the agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name, address your concerns.
We're here with Sufi Cannabis.
Go right ahead, sir.
This is our time to give our five minutes. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Hewitt, Commissioner Kasabun, Commissioner Sui, Vice Mayor Watson, Mayor Romanek. It's an honor to finally meet you guys. Been waiting a few months. Good evening, everyone.
Testing one-two.
Yep.
My name is Rudy Santana. I'm CEO of Sufi Cannabis, Inc. I am a Fordham MBA and ex-Big Four consultant turned cannabis entrepreneur for the sole purpose of creating jobs and using cannabis as a platform for economic development of the communities where we're operating in. We're here tonight to seek support for a resolution for a cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility right here in Millville. In preparing for this meeting, we've invested time, capital, and a lot of care to ensure that our project is a benefit to the community and complies with New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission regulations. To prepare for this meeting, my brother advised me not to ask what Millville can do for us, but to ask what we can do for Millville. As a Fordham MBA and ex-Big Four consultant, we're not just a cannabis company, we're also a tech company focused on traditional delivery and last mile drone delivery technology focused on South Jersey and the Delaware Valley. This is why Millville's a good location for us. In the short run, this means that we will establish our cannabis cultivation and manufacturing license, but tomorrow it'll be a mini cannabis industrial park, assuming all our four licenses eventually get approved, and then the day after, an AeroTech Green Energy Initiative. Assuming full capacity, we project over about up to 100 jobs with our cannabis cultivation alone. This will attract between $5 to $10 million in startup capital, and we project having to pay to the city anywhere between $50,000 to $200,000 under the 2% transfer tax. Over 10 years, we would like to reinvest our profits again into the AeroTech Green Energy Initiative, maybe reinvest our profits into the airport industrial park and turn that into a hub for advanced manufacturing, drone logistics, and sustainable energy. And thereby, over 10 years, that 100 jobs can turn into 1,500 jobs, $250 million in private investment, and an anchor for new industries in aerospace, clean technology, and what we do hemp biotech. Our proposed location is 415 South Second Street, Block 529, Lot 1.01. It is a 52,000, it was previously a car wash, a drive-through car wash, self-service car wash. It's a 52,000 square foot lot with an 1,800 square foot structure currently on. It's been closed for over 10 years, or at least 10 years. It will be an enclosed, a secure, closed-loop cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facility producing clean, lab-tested products for licensed retailers only. There will be no onsite consumption, no odor, and no public access. Our facility, our cultivation facility, will be fully enclosed with heap of filtered air systems to eliminate odor and to help us comply with DEP environmental standards. We are a professional company that wants to operate according to regulations. Our security, we're, we have fencing around the facility, we have 24-hour surveillance, and again, no public access. You know, access would be restricted. Our goal is not just to establish a cannabis facility here in Millville, but to partner with Millville. We look forward to cooperating with local schools, also with universities, with our drone delivery softwares. We look forward to cooperating with work training initiatives as well as environmental projects. As we like to say when we play around, ask the question to be or not to be. To be a township, to be a city, the city of Millville. We believe that if you build it, they will come. And we would like that opportunity and your support for a cannabis cultivation and manufacturing resolution. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Most of you know me. I'm Pastor Brian Robinson. I'm pastor at First United Methodist Church here in town and also moderator for the Millville Ministers, Millville Ministers Group. I'd like to also speak about item number 18. Obviously, any type of product that causes addictive behavior is not one that we, as the Millville Ministers, could support. The location of this is very close to a school. Having been a former principal, I can tell you we do a lot of education about not having addictive drugs. To put this so close to a school may seem like it's sending a mixed message to some. So I would just like to encourage the City Commission to carefully consider not just the financial impact, and there are many wonderful things. There are many wonderful things. But I'd also like you to consider, do we need something that has potentially addictive behaviors to it, one more thing in our city? It's like saying we need another bar. Do we really? Thank you.
Seeing nobody else, I will close public comment on agendas, items. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none, Mayor.
Presentations, seeing none. Bills, please.
Make a motion, pay the bills.
Second motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Petitions and letters.
There are none.
Reports of commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, we've got a few things on the agenda tonight. We're going to be purchasing the body-worn cameras for the PD. We're going to be purchasing the breathing apparatus, new harnesses, new face masks for the fire department, along with a air compressor for those bottles, because as was explained to us, and I actually saw those bottles compared to what we have now the other day, and I fully understand why we need a new compressor. And we have now finished ambulance 3030, which is the ambulance that we worked together with Lawrence Township to purchase. The ambulance has been through the shop. The ambulance has now been fully wrapped, and today it passed state inspection. The EMTs will be working on it to learn the workings of that ambulance. It's an older ambulance, so a little bit different operation of the stretcher, bringing patients in and out. Not going to be anything major, and that, we will then have ambulance 3030 up and operating in the city of Millville. With that, progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. Commissioner Sui.
Yeah, over the last week, the Parks Department has completed the fall cleanup throughout the park system, and over the last couple of weeks, we have switched over another dozen of our decorative light poles to LEDs. This Saturday, we will hold our annual pumpkin extravaganza from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. between Second and Third Streets on High in immediate vicinity of Capone's, which is a new restaurant that will be opening shortly on High. There'll be pony rides, trunk-or-treat, pumpkin decorating, and other spooky fun. You have until this Friday to enter the home or business into the annual Halloween decorating contest. To sign up, call 856-825-7000, extension 7394, or email recreation@millvilleNJ.gov. I checked into code blue money yesterday for the Hope Center that should be available after the next county meeting. So hopefully, we'll get that squared away. Fingers crossed on that one. We had an inquiry for opioid money for transport to a methadone clinic. So I again reached out to the Hope Center to see what their director, one of their directors, thought, and they thought that it would, at least something similar to that, could provide a way for some of our local addicts to possibly get some treatment that they wouldn't ordinarily be able to get because we don't have a clinic here. So I'll be reaching out further if you guys wish to proceed with that, if you think about that over the next two weeks till the next meeting, to see if you want to proceed. One was, one idea was for a company that actually approached us to run a shuttle service. The other idea was for vouchers, to send them over on the bus or whatever, back and forth on a bus with vouchers, which may be a little more efficient. So anyway, that's that. Also CRP, Community Realty Partners, will be coming for the planning board in November for hopefully their final approval for that project over there. And with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Sui. Commissioner Kasabun.
Right, for Streets and Roads for the mid-October, Streets and Roads is currently preparing for loose leaf collections, which runs from November 1st to December the 31st. You can put your leaves out to the curb now, and we will begin collection Monday, November the 3rd. Brushed collection is over for 2025. Residents can only place loose leaves out to the curb now till the end of the year. If anyone has a brush to dispose of, take it to your compost facility at Cedar Street, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays from 7:15 to 2:45. Any questions or concerns, please contact Streets and Roads, 825-7000, extension 7388. Shout out to Tiger Sharks Swim Club. They did their third cleanup on South Wade Boulevard. Final one is due in a few weeks. What a great example of volunteering. If anybody's interested, again, contact Streets and Roads at 825-7000. I did Friday, it was a nice third Friday. It was very, very, very nice, had a lot of fun. And about that, that's it for me.
Mystery on High, correct?
Mystery on High, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kasabun. Vice Mayor Watson, go ahead.
Just wanted to thank the Finance Department for getting all the items underneath the resolutions. For the wastewater treatment plant, the secondary clarifier, the concrete clarifier foundation demo has been completed, and material has been held off-site. The next step is excavation. The Engineering Department finalized all required permits for the solids waste de-watering project. Engineering also had a pre-bid meeting for the pleasant drive improvements. The actual bid opening is November 13th. And then also a quick thank you to all the departments that had a hand into responding to a sinkhole on Second and Vine, Engineering, Streets and Roads, Sewer, Utility and Collection. Even City Solicitor gave us some guidance here. So thank you to all those departments. Good job from everybody working together. That's all I have.
Tax collector.
You've got one more.
Tax collector report.
Oh, yeah, I do. Make a motion to receive and file a tax collector's report for the month of September.
Second motion.
Yeah, motion second to receive and file the tax collector's report for the month of September of this year. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Zoning Board will potentially take place on November 6, at 6 o'clock here in the chambers. As Commissioner Sui said, Planning Board meeting will take place on November 10 at 6:30. Every planning board is usually filled with many resolutions and ordinances, but you know, this is to see the phases of hopefully CRP, Commercial Realty Partners, be set in stone clerically, and then move on to groundbreaking. Speaking about that, Planning Board did approve of what we call PD 47 developers, which will bring a Raising Canes, Valvoline Quick Service, and Aspen Dental, and a Starbucks drive-through that got approved at the last, at this month's Planning Board. This past Saturday was very busy with candidate forum being held at the library. Glassdown had their second annual Wheels and Squeals presented by Veteran Suicide Prevention Coalition, as well as a trunk-or-treat and car show. I assume there's probably 50 cars, maybe, maybe a little lighter, but the weather out, the weather out this whole weekend and even today with it being mid-70s, it was really, really nice out there. Following that, I went to Happy Cola Brands groundbreaking ceremony, micro-cultivator and manufacturer, which will be in between Wade Boulevard and 16th Street. It's a lot of land, and they're going to put a brand-new building up for their process. Excited to see Damon and his wife go through with this process, and I wish them all the Ordinances in the second reading.
Ordinance for second reading, item number one, an ordinance amending the salary ordinance.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have a motion and second, an ordinance in the second reading, item number one. I will now open it up for public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please go to the podium, state your name, address your concerns. Seeing none, I will close public hearing. Roll call.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Ordinance for second reading, item number two, an ordinance amending Millville Code, Chapter 39A, Motor Vehicle and Traffic Regulation schedules, Section 17, Parking prohibited at all times, to remove the designation therein of the East Side of Columbia Avenue, Dock Street to Broad Street.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion second for ordinance in the second reading, item number two. I will now open it up for public hearing. If anybody from the public would like to comment on this ordinance, please go to the podium. Seeing that, I will close it. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Ordinance is in the first reading, please.
Ordinance for first reading, item number one, an ordinance to amend the salary ordinance.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second, ordinance in the first reading, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Ordinance for first reading, item number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 52, Police Regulations of the Millville Code to repeal Article, I don't have that number, electric power bidder scooters in its entirety and replace it with new Article Number 7, Electric Bicycles and Scooters, to establish regulations associated with the operation of both electric bicycles and scooters.
Make motion.
Second.
We have motion second for ordinance in the first reading, item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes. Resolutions, please.
Resolution item number one, a resolution to award a non-fair and open contract to Holly City Development Corporation for annual downtown gift card program administration in an amount not to exceed $40,000.
Move the resolution. I have certification of funds in the amount of $40,000, signed by our CFO.
Second motion.
We have a motion second with certification of funds on resolution, item number one. Any comments?
Yes, this has been a very successful program for the downtown merchants whereby you buy the gift cards, and then you spend the money down there, and it regenerates, and it's a very good program.
Very good program.
Yep. With a, I remember every year in the past, you know, always a long lines, and people look very forward to this. So thank you once again, Holly City Development Corporation. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number two, resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2026 Ford F-250 pickup truck under New Jersey State Contract 24, Fleet 103120 pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon 11-12, in amount not to exceed $64,016.
Make a motion, and with that, I have certifications of funds in the amount of $64,016, signed by our CFO, Tricia McGee.
Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution, item number two. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number three, resolution authorizing tax and utility adjustments.
Make motion.
Second motion.
We have motion second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number four, resolution authorizing to award a contract to Diamond Construction for the High Street Downtown Sidewalk Improvements Phase Two Project.
Make motion on resolution item number four. With that, I do have certification of availability of funds in the total amount of $310,845, signed by our CFO, Tricia McGee.
Second motion.
We have motion second, resolution item number four. Any comments?
Yes. This is another use of our UEZ funds in the UEZ zone, so something coming out of property taxes there, and it will help the downtown reinvestment in the downtown.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number five, resolution authorizing to award a contract to South State, Inc., for the 14th Street Road Improvement Project.
Make motion on resolution item number five. Would that have certification of availability of funds in the total amount of $218,113.92, signed by our CFO, Tricia McGee.
Second motion.
We have motion second, resolution item number five. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number six, resolution authorizing special assessment of municipal liens for certain properties incurred by Millville relating to cut and clean.
Make motion.
Second. We have motion second, resolution item number six. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number seven, resolution authorizing the purchase of one 2025 Peterbilt 548 Dump Truck under Sourceball Contract 060920 PMC pursuant to NJSA 52,34-6.2, in amount not to exceed $225,450.15.
I make a motion, and with that, I have certifications of funds for $222,450.15, signed by CFO Officer Trish McGee.
We have motion second with certification of funds. Any comments on the resolution? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number eight, resolution authorizing the purchase of one Arctic compressor under National Purchasing Partners Contract M5705581 pursuant to PL 1954, C. Point 48, in amount not to exceed $68,445.16.
Make motion on resolution item number eight. With that, I have certification of availability of funds in the total amount of $68,445.16, signed by our CFO, Tricia McGee.
Second motion.
We have motion second, resolution item number eight. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number nine, resolution authorizing the purchase of air packs under New Jersey State Contract 24, Fleet 51850 pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon 11-12, in an amount not to exceed $617,290.290.
Make motion, and with that, I have certification of funds in the amount of $617,290.290, signed by Chief Financial Officer Tricia McGee.
Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution, item number nine. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number 10, resolution authorizing the purchase of body-worn cameras under New Jersey State Contract 17, Fleet 00738 pursuant to NJSA 40A, colon 11-12, in an amount not to exceed $401,070.
Make motion, and with that, I have certification of funds in the amount of $401,070, signed by CFO Tricia McGee.
Second motion.
We have motion and second on resolution, item number 10. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Kasabun.
Yes.
Commissioner Sui.
Yes.
Mayor Romanek.
Yes.
Resolution item number 11, resolution for support for suitability of cannabis business.
Move the resolution.
Second motion.
We have motion second on resolution, item number 11. Any comments?
Yes. I hear your objections, and I understand them. This is grow to be fenced in. It won't be, I'm just, you know, and there are several other ones, some even closer to schools than this one. I just want to explain it, you know. So when this ordinance was being passed a long time ago in the last commission, there was very little objection to cannabis sales, any of it. For what reason, I don't know why there was no objection at the time. So that's why I moved the resolution, and that's why I will support the resolution.
And if I can, Mayor.
Okay.
Just so folks know, a lot of folks do not know in this town that we do have one operating cannabis grow facility in this city. State law mandates there can be no signage. There's no signage on the vehicles that go in and out of those facilities. Personally, I attended a drill for our entire fire department and EMS squad at the facility that is operating now. There's no access to that building unless you need to get, unless you're an employee. We now know how to get in there in case there's a fire. But if there is a fire, every room, don't hold me to it, but I'm pretty sure I walked through, we walked through and saw how everything operates, from a seed to produce, to packaging it. All separate rooms, sealed rooms. rooms, sealed rooms. If there's a fire in one room, that building locks down, that whole facility locks down. And actually, by the time the fire trucks are on the way, that compartment that might have the situation, everything's shut off. Oxygen's shut off, that fire self-extinguishes itself. Uh, and there is nothing. Uh, and I understand, uh, and I talked to a lot of the reverends and stuff, and we started this on our side, uh, this commission, uh, 'cause there was pushback there. Uh, we have to get some money here somehow. Uh, Vineland last year, don't hold me to it, but I believe they're right around eight hundred thousand dollars worth of tax money.
Eight oh one.
It, it, it's, exactly. It's, we need things here, folks. Uh, I look at it as a bit of a sacrifice in some people's minds. Uh, maybe a big sacrifice, but it's a positive for the city of Millville. We have to, we have to get moving forward and catch up with the times here. So, I will, my vote will mirror that thought. Thank you, Mayor.
I wanted to add one more thing. Uh, great presentation. Uh, you spoke very well. You answered a lot of questions that a lot of people have, you know, when this subject comes to light. Um, but something happened after you both, both, uh, spoke. You guys, you know, shook hands. Um, it's really awesome to see, you know, two different opinions. You were able to shake hands, respect each other. Um, I just wanted to highlight that and let the residents to know, you know, that, that happened. It's good to see, put it that way. Um, I haven't really been in support of cannabis, and, um, you know, I think working together, uh, you'll, you'll see my vote, but we're trying to work together. Just difference of opinion, and we were able to respect that, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Epstein.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Epstein.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romine?
Yes. New business.
New business, item number one, motion to authorize the municipal clerk to advertise for bids for the following professional and non-professional services, professional services for twenty-twenty-six, and CDBG advisor.
Make motion. Second motion.
We have a motion second on new business, item number one. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes.
Commissioner Suie?
Yes.
Mayor Romine?
Yes. Public comment portion. We have now reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone who would like to address the commission, please go to the podium, state your name, and address your concerns. Please limit your comments to approximately
Hi, Cindy Cook, Valene, Millville. Um, as part of my responsibility to, um, on the Homeless Trust Fund representing the city of Millville, I also participate in the Continuum of Care, which is the CEAS. Um, that's the system for coordinating the homeless at, entry programs throughout not just Cumberland County, but all of South Jersey. Um, with that information, I received a couple, an email that I thought was important to share with our community, and it's regarding the SNAP program. We did receive word that the federal government shutdown in October might affect the SNAP nutrition programs. With that, it's unclear if the benefits loaded onto the debit card before October thirty-first, will it be affected or not. The Work First of New Jersey Program should be available on time for the recipients. The Child Care Assistant Program, and, um, at this time, it looks like it will not be interrupted at all, and so the family should be okay. And it does not look like it's gonna impact when recipients receive their child support payments. Now, for further information, people can go to NJSNAP, S-N-A-P dot gov, and they can actually get the information as it becomes available. But I thought it was important that our people have this information so that they're not worried about whether these programs are gonna be cut because of the shutdown. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy, for that information.
Mary Messick here of Millville. It's not so much as a concern. It's just a response to various things that I've heard, seen. One was, there's been a video that's been circulating nonstop about trash debris sprawled around one of the, uh, empty buildings that's in the, uh, I'm gonna call it a strip mall where Dollar Tree and, um, Family Dollar is. What most, whoever cleaned it up, we thank you for that. But by rights, what most people don't understand, that whole property is owned by a particular person or company, and all those stores are nothing more than tenants, and they all share the area for the trash section. And my personal opinion to that one is, if all these stores are putting their trash out, they're seeing the trash that's sprawled here, there, and everywhere, it isn't going to hurt anybody to bend over and pick it up and put it where it belongs. I understand a lot of it is because somebody happens to be going through it. Then again, too, it could be so full that somebody hasn't made the phone call to sit there and call whatever company they've got to remove it, that it's overflowing. But they need to understand that. And I've also am going to respond to the multiples negativity on bashing the police department for not doing anything about four-wheelers and motorbikes that are not really meant to be on the street, that the police aren't doing anything. It's not their fault. Their hands are tied by the Attorney Generals. The only thing I can suggest is, get out and vote on November fourth, so we'll get in, an Attorney General, hopefully, that he'll untie the police department's hands. And second of all, write letters to the Attorney General telling him about your various concerns. I understand. Yes, chasing them can cause a lot of problems for both the police department as well as individuals. But stop bashing the police department for something that they have no control over. And I appreciate the time.
Hello, I'm Tom McGinty. I'm from the city. Um, with the cannabis issue, uh, we need businesses to come into Millville. Um, I know cannabis isn't popular with a lot of people, and I understand the negatives as far as perceptions that go along with cannabis. And we can argue about it all night, and, you know, the, the good thing is, this is very controlled, as we all know. Um, we've seen presentations by the cannabis producers. A lot of it is medicinal. Um, it's not stuff that's gonna go on to the street. Um, but the other thing that we have to think about is the ancillary equipment, the machinery, the people who, uh, are going to install it, repair it, um, the, uh, you know, parts and service to refrigeration, uh, which it's my understanding there is quite a bit of. Um, uh, the air handling equipment, it's all high-tech, it's all big dollars, and in addition to what we reap from the tax and from, uh, other things, from the cannabis industry, we get a lot of unseen benefits to the community, where hopefully, they try to buy local as much as they can and keep the place running, keep the place looking nice. Um, it's not an insignificant amount of money. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, I will close public comment portion. Closing comments of Commissioners. Commissioner Hewitt?
Uh, yes. Uh, I think I'll let you handle the trash situation, Mayor.
You can comment if you want, doesn't matter.
Uh, we are on this trash situation, Mary. Yes, residents around that area are using those dumpsters. Uh, probably more, 'cause I know there's been a few of us Commissioners out there. There's been code enforcement out there, both sides, both of our code enforcement people. Uh, I get copied due to public safety, I believe, uh, Mayor gets copied in all the emails from our code enforcement. The owner of that property is doing his due diligence. Last I heard, they are going to be fencing in those, but that's not gonna do anything. Let's, let's be honest. They're gonna just toss their dirty clothes and everything right over the fence. At least it won't be blown all over the place. The fence will be a catchall. So, that's being worked on, just so you know. Uh, four-wheelers, you know where we are there? And you saw the ordinance we brought forward tonight that's gonna cover, because they are a massive hazard. They're getting to be worse than the four-wheelers. The scooters and the electric bikes are taking over. Uh, so, we're handling that with another ordinance right now, uh, that hopefully, at this point, the state hasn't even touched. But we're still not gonna be able to pursue these kids on these, on these vehicles. Uh, it'll be a whole lot easier to reach out and stop a scooter that's on the sidewalk on High Street. Uh, so, uh, myself, I had a little bit of a run-in on Carlton Avenue the other night with a scooter after dark, two young kids on a stand-up scooter. Luckily, I saw them, 'cause they were running right down the ma- the middle lane of, line of the road. Uh, so, that's what that ordinance was. We'll do a second reading on it and pass it next meeting. We're doing as best we can. Uh, I just got a text. Uh, Commissioner Kosabun, I will, 'cause they're watching, uh, a question as to, I think I know the answer, but I'm gonna let you verify it tomorrow.
Okay.
Asked what they can do with old stale gas. I don't know, I think that could probably be taken over with the oil. I don't know.
I'm not sure, yeah, because it's.
But, but, yeah, they're watching. It's a resident, and, uh, that way there, you could.
I will look into that, and I will get an answer for that.
If you can get back with me, I'll let you know.
I will definitely do that.
And, uh, with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Hewitt. I would think the county would take it, wouldn't you?
I would think, that's.
For the hazardous waste collection?
Hazardous waste, 'cause it's gas, it's not oil.
Yeah, we'll check.
We'll check.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Suie?
Sure, I'm gonna address that trash first. So, upon seeing that video, I called the code enforcement officer, and he said he didn't, nobody made a complaint. He went over there, he called the landlord. The landlord took care of it, and of course, the video still circulates. So, you know, when you see something, if you call us instead of, and you can post it on Facebook, too, but if you would bring it to our attention, it might be picked up a little faster than posting it on Facebook.
Yeah, 'cause it is the same video, Commissioner. You're right.
Mr. Watson, I appreciate your consistency on the cannabis manufacturing and sales issue. You're consistent on that, and I've been the whole time, so I appreciate that. Um, as was mentioned, this is the last meeting before the election. So, you guys consider who you vote for. I know the mayor is very fond of quotes. So, the government you elect is the government you deserve, and that's by Thomas Jefferson. So, keep that in mind when you go vote. Figure out what you want, figure out if you want four-wheelers riding down the street, or you don't. Figure out who's going to stop it, who isn't. If you want Nav Avenue, vote for your county Commissioners that are gonna make it happen. If you don't want it, vote for the other guys. And the same goes with the nineteen of us, which is going to be a very interesting election. And with that, progress.
Thank you, Commissioner Suie. Commissioner Kosabun?
Yes. Commissioner Suie, yes, I agree. Nineteen, it should be very interesting, but vote, just get out and vote, please. And I have one for you. Remember, mostly the world sees you the way you see yourself. And with that, it's on you.
Now, well, next is, thank you, Commissioner Kosabun. Vice Mayor Watson, anything?
Yeah, just to help Commissioner Kosabun now, um, Streets and Roads does not take stale gas.
I didn't think so.
Uh, hazardous waste day at the, uh, the authority.
I don't think it's until January, but I'll find out that date and let you know.
April.
April.
Got you. Got you.
But the resident can take it out there, I think.
Yes.
City County, yeah.
Um, as far as I, for, as far as me for closing, uh, good luck to all those in, in the election.
I am. Yes, Mary, Bob Police has been on that actively, um, just as Commissioner Hewitt has said and Commissioner Suie has said. Um, we're all very aware of that. Our, that video's out there, but the, the owner of that, uh, building and property, they have been working, um, not all fairly and equally. It was a little, uh, contentious, um, as, uh, Bob Police could tell you, um, getting it done, but it has been done, and it is on our furthermore radar, as, you know, you'll see, you know, Big Brother always say this, if you see, see something, say something. And I could think that harkens to what Commissioner Suie said, you know, you can still post on Facebook, but, you know, give us a call, see if it is, if it is still happening after it did get cleaned up. Um, but, you know, I could almost speak your own words, and it's just that little piece of paper. We can all do a difference, and that's just, you know, talking at the societal level, of picking up a random piece of trash, a random piece of paper, just being recycled where it needs to go. Um, and as I look up the brainy quote of the day, and this could be related to, uh, all of the candidates that are running for election on November fourth statewide, "The reward for work well done is the opportunity to do more." Jonas Salk. Motion for a German?
Make motion.
Second.